Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Mary Anne Casson and I'm the Chair today. And with me I have Mr. Marziani, Mr. Nipfeld, Ms. Martin, and online we have Ms. Sankar. And I don't have my camera on, so I'm just gonna correct that. I also am struggling with some laryngitis, so if I lose my voice, you'll know why. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who wish to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, or phone. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending today in person who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. All right, Mr. Secretary Treasurer, shall we start with confirmation of minutes? Why don't we do conflicts? Conflicts, okay. Does anyone have any conflicts to declare this morning? No, appears to be none.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Why don't we move on to minutes?
All right.
We have the October ninth minutes, and on the panel we're Ms. Casson, Ms. Martin, Mr. Nipfeld, Ms. Sankar, and Mr. Schwartz.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Nipfeld, seconder? Ms. Sankar? All in favor? That is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just have a bit of housekeeping to do before we move on. I'm looking for a motion for the panel members to consider and approve the twenty-twenty-six North York Committee of Adjustment dates.
Thank you. Do we have someone who would like to move that? Mr. Marziani?
Motion to approve.
All right, and seconder? Mr. Nipfeld? All in favor? That is carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can move on.
I believe we have one deferral this morning?
Oh.
No? Fourteen?
Oh, that's in the two P M.
Oh. Why did I? Oh, yes. Sorry, wasn't looking at my agenda correctly. All right. All right, let's begin with item one, which is two sixty-three Haddington Avenue. This is consent to sever a seventeen-point-two-meter lot into two lots of eight-point-six meters each. I believe the variances were already approved in a previous application. On file, we have a previous decision, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, cover letter, survey, draft our plan, proposed site plan, revised proposed site plan, tree plan, tree plan revised, development engineering memo, urban forestry memo, a late staff memo. I believe that is it. And do we have our applicant with us?
Can you hear me? Good morning.
You could speak up a little more.
Good morning, Committee Chair and Committee Members. Yes, my name is Raza Sekavati, and I reside in Two Hemford Crescent, North York, and I'm the agent of the owner.
Thank you. And any changes to make to the application today?
No. It is as we have submitted.
Do you want to just give us a brief explanation of the reason you're here?
Yes, as you mentioned, we had consent and variance approved a couple of years ago, and unfortunately, the owner could not complete all the condition in the given two years, and consent lapse, so that's why we are back in the committee again today.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Nipfeld?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Sekvadi, have you seen the development engineering report?
Yes, I have.
They're recommending deferral. Would you like to speak to that?
I don't think that's necessary really, because the one important issue is there is a post, electrical post, very close to the driveway, and I think you can put it as a condition to the consent, and we can deal with it. We have no problem, you know, removing the post later on.
All right. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm concerned with approving something that development engineering is recommending deferral of. If it was as simple as the applicant's indicated, I'm sure that the development engineering would have proposed that. Their deferral seems to me to suggest that the issue is more complicated, so I'm not convinced by his explanation.
Okay, a follow-up question to the applicant. What is the status of the permit applications for the houses?
The houses are, the shell of the houses have been already constructed, and we have a revision permit, because as built, construction wasn't as per the drawings, so we are back to the building department for a revision to the existing permit. That's what it is. And back to the referral, I think the engineering suggested referral because they thought we cannot prepare our documentation in the, you know, time that we had until today, the committee. But I submitted a revised site plan, all the issues, the other issues were resolved. The only issue is remaining is that removal of the post, which, as I say, we can do it later, and the owner accepts the cost. I mean, that was the important point in their comments, that the owner pays for the removal of that post, which he accepts.
But your revised site plan that you submitted, does it still show the light post in the driveway?
Yeah, well, it shows that it's gonna be removed. That's what it shows. It's not in the driveway, it's close to the, it's in vicinity of the driveway. It has to be one meter away. It's not one meter away, it's less than one meter away.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just throw you a quick reminder, whatever conditions you put on the consent approval needs to be cleared by the agency that requested it before a certificate to divide is signed. So just keep that in mind. I only clarify, I only mention that because I want the applicant to understand that a signed certificate will not be issued if any conditions imposed are not satisfied.
Thank you. All right, any further questions for the applicant, or do you want to take this into committee? All right, let's take it into committee. Mr. Nipfeld?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I remain concerned that development engineering condition is, or recommendation is for deferral. And then unlike what the applicant said, the issues before us are, there is an existing pole, the sounds as though development engineering needs confirmation about the positive slope on the driveway, and they're not sure which trees are being preserved. So that sounds to me like a larger number of items than the applicant had suggested. So I'm, at this point, I'm not prepared to recommend approval of this application, I would recommend a deferral.
All right. I believe we have had this in the past where we've made them conditions of the final approval, so I don't have as many concerns as you do, because they would have to clear that before they're able to sever the properties and obtain permits. So personally, don't have this, don't share the same concern, but other committee members might have some comments. Mr. Marziani?
I agree with you, Madam Chair. I don't have that much concern. I think the applicant has satisfied the conditions, so I am positive.
And we have a staff report recommending approval, subject to conditions, the standard conditions. All right. Does somebody want to attempt a motion on this?
I can try and see.
Okay.
So I put forward a motion to approve this application, subject to Engineering Department comments and also staff reports, a standard condition for consent application.
All right, seconder? Ms. Martin? All in favor of the application? That is four in favor, all opposed. Mr. Nipfeld is opposed. That application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, item number two. Four oh eight Horsham Avenue. This is a consent to sever a seventeen-point-three-seven-meter lot into two nine-point-nine-seven-meter lots. We have variances for lot frontage, lot area, east and west side yard setbacks, east side yard setback to front platform, west side yard setback to the rear platform, lot coverage, number of stories, height of front and rear exterior main walls, finished floor height, building length, area of rear platform, percentage of front yard landscaping, and percentage of soft landscaping. On file, we have a survey, draft our plan, supporting material, site photos, community planning report, engineering and construction services memo, forestry memo, heritage and preservation services memo, and we have opposition petition and signatures from approximately thirty-four neighbors. Do we have our applicant in front of us? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Committee of Adjustment. My name is Shawei Chen, the agent on behalf of the owner.
And the address?
My address is seventy Northern Crescent, Toronto.
All right, and before we begin, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Okay, so if we can get approved for the consent, for the lot severance, we can reduce viruses.
All right, let's just, no changes to the consent application, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Are you referring to the part one and part two notices that you would make changes to?
Yeah.
All right, so let's pull up the part one application. And just go through one by one whether you have any changes to make to the variances.
The building length?
Length?
Yeah.
Which is number twelve, I believe?
That is number twelve, yeah.
And what is the proposed change?
We can make this meet the zoning bylaw, go to seventeen meters, remove this.
Oh, okay, so you would, you're proposing to remove that, okay.
Remove this one.
Okay, any other changes to part one?
And the main wall height?
Main wall height.
Main wall height.
Yeah, which one? There's two. There's nine and ten, I believe. Front exterior main wall and rear exterior main wall, nine and ten.
Yeah, we can change it to eight-point-five meters, both.
Yeah, we need to know, is it for number nine? Is it for both?
Both, both.
Okay, for nine and ten, you're proposing to change it from, the proposed height from eight-point-nine-two to eight-point-five?
Yeah.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes?
Not so far.
Sorry?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
For both parts.
For both part, okay, so part one, do you want to go through part two, staff? Okay, yep. Okay, so let's go to part two notice. So it would be, since we started with building length on the other one, maybe we'll do it.
I think it's.
Eight?
Number eight, you're right. Remove, eliminate. Yeah, remove, number eight.
The numbers are different. So, okay, so remove number eight on part two, and then for main wall heights.
Main wall heights.
Looks like five and six?
Yeah.
And again, you're changing it from requesting eight-point-nine-two to eight-point-five?
Yeah.
Is that correct? For both? All right. Everybody clear? All right, does anyone have any questions from the applicant, or do you want a presentation? Okay. Have you seen the community planning report recommending refusal?
Yes, before we discuss with planner.
Okay, so perhaps you could give us a brief presentation, particularly addressing the concerns that have been raised by staff, I suppose, in recommending refusal? Yeah. All right.
So you have the supported material, can you show this one in the screen? I believe you have that one. Okay, compared to the similar case just approved in the beginning of this year from the CFA, that project is two-four-one, Horsham Avenue. It's nine hundred meters from our subject property, is the east side. That was very close to this product. So we just compare ours proposed to these projects, very close, it's a minor difference. The comments from the city planner said, okay, the size and the shape's too smaller, it's not very familiar with neighborhoods, based on the section fifty-one twenty-four of the Planning Act, especially C and F. So we are not clear how close the panel can prove, because there is not, there is not exact number here to show house models, it's not accessible. So we just do a simple analysis here. Our new lot frontage is just sixty-four-point-eight percent, based on the lot frontage as required by the law. The new lot area is seventy-one-point-five percent, as a comparison. Regarding the street scape, based on the skill, density, and the image, we just set up a three-D photograph, a three-D diagramma, is the last page. Yeah, last page, the page number three? Yeah, above. Yeah, based on this image, this proposal does not significantly change the fabric scale and the density of the community. That's ours explanation, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Nipfeld?
Thank you, Madam. Just a comment, I don't, I think perhaps you've got the process a little confused. It isn't the planning department's position to provide you with the smallest frontage that they be prepared to accept. The frontage that's established is in the bylaw. You are the one that's requesting a smaller frontage. The department, the planning department quite rightly has said that the frontages that you're suggesting are not appropriate for the area, and they provided some background information to support that point of view. So that's not their role, to give you the minimal amounts that you could get away with. The bylaw is what is the focus of this hearing, and you have to make a case for why the bylaw could be altered.
Thank you, Mr. Nipfeld. Mr. Marziani?
So in your presentation, you mentioned there is an approval, there is an approval in a hundred meter away from your property, and can you give us more detail of the frontage and address for that?
I think it's show the page number one. Oh, no, sorry, page number two, page number two. Oh, sorry, I corrected the statement I just said before, that's the percentage is for two-four-one. The four oh eight, sorry, the four oh eight, not the four four oh eight, four oh eight is fifty-eight percent, sixty-three percent. But I agree that the panel said, the process, yes, the zoning bylaw gives a minimum frontage and minimum area, not the planner, you are right, thank you. So the two-four-one, Horsham, the new lot frontage is nine-point-seven-to-five meters, the new lot area is three-hundred-and-nine-four, nine-three. Four oh eight, the frontage is eight-point-nine, six-nine, lot area is three-hundred-and-forty-eight.
But that is not in immediate context, it's like four intersection away from your property.
Yeah.
So it's not a hundred meters, I don't.
Not a hundred meters.
So when we're talking about the immediate context, we mean like in the same block?
No, there is not. In this, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant, otherwise we'll move on to the neighbors? All right. Thank you. Sorry, sir, it's the committee's turn to ask questions. All right. If you could sit down for now, and we'll call you back up once we've heard from the neighbors. So we have two people, I believe, in person today, is that correct? To speak? Come forward. And please make sure the microphone's on, and start with your address, please.
Yes. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Committee of Adjustment, to the applicant, and to my fellow members of the We West Willdale Rate Pairs Association. My name is Tom Vidiotis, I live at four-twelve Horsham Avenue, separated by one fifty-five-foot lot from four oh eight Horsham. I'm here to respectfully but firmly oppose this application. On November sixteen, a notice sign was posted at four eight Horsham. Despite the Planning Act requirement to notify all properties within sixty meters, none of us received a notice of hearing. The applicant also did not reach out to any neighbors, a step that is not mandatory but considered standard practice in North York for applications of this scale. Once we learned the details, several neighbors met to review the proposal. We looked for all the pros and cons, but found no planning merits. We were unanimously opposed, so strongly opposed that we united with another group to form We West Willdale Rate Pairs Association, which is now underway and already active. And we created these cool little stickers to represent us, as you can see. Fortunately, the community planning has completed all the factual and data-driven arguments we were prepared to make. They have provided a very clear and detailed staff report recommending refusal of the application. Their analysis identifies the fundamental issue. The proposed severance produces two lots that are far below the established pattern of the neighborhood. In the contextual area, there are three-hundred-and-eighty-one lots, only three of them have frontages under ten meters. The applicant proposes two lots at eight-point-six-nine meters, which would be the narrowest lots in the entire area. Despite the zoning bylaw requiring fifteen meters, this directly undermines the stable physical character of the neighborhood as envisioned by the official plan. To compensate for this undersized lot fabric, the proposal requires sixteen additional major variances to make this project feasible. These include, but are not limited to, maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to a requested thirty-nine-point-eight-five percent, it's an increase of almost twenty-five percent overall. Maximum number of stories from two to three, a fifty percent increase. Maximum permitted heights for both front and back exterior main walls from seven-point-five to eight-point-five, as they adjusted today, which is still a thirteen percent increase. Maximum permitted first floor height from one-point-two meters to one-point-five-seven meters, a thirty-one percent increase. Minimum required lots are supposed to be five-hundred-and-fifty square meters, they're proposing three-hundred-and-forty-eight-point-eight-three, a decrease of thirty-seven percent. Minimum required side yard setbacks of one-point-eight meters to point-six-one meters, a decrease of point-six, of sixty-six percent. These are not minor deviations, they are significant departures from the intent of both the official plan and the zoning bylaw, and they're only made necessary because of the aggressive lot split. None of the variants is satisfied the four tests under section forty-five-point-one. They do not maintain the intent of the official plan, they do not maintain the intent of the zoning bylaw, they are not minor in nature, and they are not desirable for the appropriate development of the land. I have lived in Willdale for nearly fifty-three years, and at four-twelve Horsham for over sixteen years. My home, my community, and my investment is in this neighborhood, and they are long-term. This application is speculative, does not contribute positively to the neighborhood, and would set an undesirable precedent for further narrow lot intensification in the stable residential area. I respectfully ask the committee to give way to the professional assessment from community planning, to recognize the cohesiveness of the neighborhood's response, and to uphold the long-established planning framework that guides development. and to uphold the long-established planning framework that guides development in North York. For these reasons, I strongly urge you to refuse the application. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very thorough.
Thank you.
Do we have another person who wishes to speak today?
I wasn't registered.
That's okay, you can come forward.
I have a few words I want to say.
Okay. It's helpful if you don't repeat too much of what's already been stated, but if you have a unique perspective.
I'm an old guy, I can't hear well, and I can't see well, so.
All right, well hopefully you can speak clearly.
I've always wanted to do that. Hello, 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 anyways.
Let's start with your name and address, sir.
My name, my name is Michael DiTrani, D I T R A N I. And I reside at two seven eight Horsham Avenue, right on the same street, up the street.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so.
You have five minutes.
Here's my thing, and now I had a couple of questions when the gentleman was doing his stuff.
You can raise them now, and you can address them.
And I just mentioned them, so, here's my questions. How long has the owner of this, this owner of four oh eight Horsham, lived and or owned the property? How, how, how long? I might just add that I've lived on Horsham for twenty-five plus years. I've lived in the neighborhood for fifty plus years. So, I'm not going, like my good friend there, we got to get together for a coffee, but he's been around too. So, you know, now that's why I raised a question. The owner, who, how long, how long has he owned the property?
So, sir, if you could keep your questions to, related to the variances that they've applied for.
I can't hear you, sorry.
You, you need to keep, ask your questions related to the application. So, how long the property has been owned by this owner is not relevant to the application, unfortunately, might be in your opinion, but it's not to the committee. It's just what are the variances, and what's the impact on you, or what your position on that?
So he doesn't, he won't answer that?
He may, but he doesn't have to.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, another question, how many similar, this is, for the city, how many similar splits have been done recently? Gone from, you know, that size to much smaller? So that's another question, and here's a good one, here's a point I'm making. If, I don't, we're, we're looking at his lot going to two lots, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, my question is this. If, if we, he were allowed to get his two lots out of it, what, what, where is the limit? Where is the lower limit? Because another guy said, oh, well, I want three lots, I want four lots out of the same size lot. Where does it stop? Where does it limit, and what does it do to the neighborhood? Now, you know, these are some important thoughts, you know, now. Now, if I may, and you, you just told me not to say, or a question or statement that doesn't relate directly to, to this matter?
To, to what's being applied for, what variances are they requesting?
I can't hear you, but anyways, I just got an interesting thought, an interesting thought. Now, if you're interested, I could tell you, but if you're not interested, then we could all just close our eyes, and I'll go back to my seat.
Well, sir, we have an application, we have three applications in front of us.
I can't hear you, sorry.
Okay, I don't know if I can talk any louder. We have three applications in front of us. One is to divide the property into two, and then we have two variance applications to construct homes with a number of variances to the zoning bylaw. So those are the three applications we have before us. That's what we're dealing with, and that's what we're looking for input on.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, well.
Does anyone have any questions for this resident? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on the matter?
I'd like to, I'd like to register, but.
Welcome.
Hi, committee members, my name is Anthony Delgrosso, and I'm at four oh six Horsham Avenue, so I'm right next door to it. My biggest concern would be the privacy issues with the decks being so high and so large, and, you know, just impeding on all the neighbors, you know, it just would be, I think, wrong. And that's just something that I wanted to mention that I'm not happy with, outside of everything that's already been mentioned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any questions? No? All right, let's have the applicant back up to address the comments that have been made by the residents.
Uh, thank you. Number one, again, if we can get a proof regarding the lot severance, we still can revise the variance, such as setback. The number one, post east side yard setback is zero point sixty-one, we can revise this one to zero point nine hundred, nine, zero point nine meters. Because we changed this one and changed the building length, so accordingly, number seven.
Sir, just to clarify, you've already made changes to the applications, you can't just keep going back and changing them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, do you have any comments to make to the residents who have spoken and the concerns they have about the severance?
Yeah, regarding the comments from the neighbor, the gentleman, gentleman, the deck is so high, impacted the privacy, that's easy for us to use the architecture design element such as the screen or some thing can protect you from the privacy, that's easier.
So I believe they asked a question about the severances in the area, like other, other properties that have been severed.
But in the immediate neighborhood, it's not, just.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Oh, Mr. Marziani, hold on, sir, if you could come back for a minute.
Uh, just a quick question, I, I see you're changing, you're making changes, and you have the refusal report from the community planning, so you didn't have a chance to talk to them?
Yes, we, we discussed this one before he uploaded the report.
Okay, and then the result was a refusal?
Yeah.
So it went with the changes that you're proposing?
Yeah, the planner insisted on his point.
So the, the changes didn't convince the planner?
No.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's take this into committee. Somebody want to comment? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think the planning department did an excellent job in this, in this particular application. I, it's a clear, concise, and forceful recommendation. I think they've clearly set out why the consent is inappropriate, given the context, which is what we're to look at. And the variances are also questionable for a variety of reasons. The, one of the applicants mentioned privacy. The actual building is raised above the ground, which creates a deck at the back, which is really high. And the screening, in this case, might actually make the building look bigger. I'm not sure that there is a good solution other than a smaller deck. I, I think that, from the point of view of evaluating the application, I really don't see any flaw in the planning department's recommendations, or in the research that led to those, so I'd be prepared to put a motion forward to refuse both the consent and variance applications, because they don't meet the requirements of the Planning Act.
All right. Is that a formal motion, then?
Um, I'd happy to make one if you want.
Yes, please.
I move that both the consent and the variance applications be refused, as they do not meet the conditions for approval from the plan, in the Planning Act. And the points that, that I would raise are those that are in the planning department report.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second or for that motion? Ms. Martin? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, the application's been refused. All right, we'll move on to item number three. Zero, eleven hundred, eleven twenty, eleven thirty, and eleven fifty, Caledonia Road. This is a consent to sever to create an easement and an additional lot. We have variances for east side yard setback to building B and building D, number of bicycle parking spaces and landscaping area. On file, we have a survey, draft our plans, a cover letter, parking justification letter, a community planning report, transportation review memo, and a late presentation. Have our applicant in front of us? Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is Ryan Guder, and I'm a land use planner with Western Consulting, on behalf of the owner, and we are the applicant for this application. I would just note that the updated presentation simply was to address a minor issue, it's, it's largely the same as what was provided to the committee.
And your address, Mr. Guder?
Two zero one Millway Avenue in.
Thank you. All right, we don't have anyone in the audience on this item, I don't think we have anyone online. Does committee want a presentation on this at all? No? Unless there's something you want to point out, I don't know that we need a presentation.
That's fair, madam, and nothing further to add, other than we do support the conditions that have been identified. We're very excited to see this development come to the city, and would look for your support and your wisdom to approve it.
All right, so you're just confirming the conditions in the planning, community planning report?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And the transportation, uh, why can I not find them now? Can we just pull them up?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Can see the name. Oh, they also have some conditions, I think.
Yeah, they do.
Yes, and you've, you're.
We reviewed them all.
You're okay with them?
And yes, and these are subject to very active site plan applications that are well advanced, so we're satisfied to address them.
All right. Okay, any questions? Anyone? All right, we'll take it into committee, thank you. Does somebody want to make a motion? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. You know, going through this application, I don't feel that I have any issues with it. I think everything was well laid out, explanatory, self-explanatory, and I think it does meet the general intent and purpose of the city's official plan. And I think it's appropriate for, you know, the development of the land and, and intent and purposes of the zoning bylaw. I will make this, I will motion to approve this application, and it, I'm gonna make it subject to the, I guess advisory comments of the, the community planning report. I don't have the date up in front of me, but it's the one that's associated with the application itself. Let me just see to make.
It's November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, that's it. And also with the development and growth planning report, there was just some advisory comments on there as well. So I'll make it subject to that, and as well.
Just, just to clarify, Ms. Sankar, those were conditions, I believe, from transportation?
Right. Okay, I guess the weight was listed was kind of subsection and one, okay, I'll, I'll put it subject to transportation. Should I also include MetroLink's advisory comments, or just comments as well?
I don't.
Madam Chair, we don't traditionally put on advisory.
We don't usually make them, unless it's on a corridor.
Well, it's, it's more to the point of anything that's advisory.
Yeah.
Is usually not a condition.
So I don't think we need to for MetroLink.
Yeah, there is no objections anyway on that, so then that's it, that's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second or? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous, the application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, item four. One seventy-nine and one eighty-three Shepherd Avenue East. This is a consent to sever the commercial elevator with associated areas and the commercial mechanical room from the commercial units in a mixed-use development, which is essentially just a consent. On file, we have a survey, draft plan, cover letter, supporting material, heritage planning report, engineering and transportation report, urban forestry memo, ravine and natural feature protection memo, MetroLink's memo, TRCA memo, and elite severance listing. We have our applicant in front of us. Morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Guy Donofreel, I'm the senior vice president of Stafford Developments, who through their companies owned the building and built the building. The address of my office there is fifty-five St. Clair Avenue West.
Thank you. And do, does anybody have a question of the applicant, or maybe you could give us a very, very brief explanation?
I, I could provide some background if it would help, Mr. Lepfel.
I was laughing, because I found it very complicated when I was going through it. I understand it.
Okay.
And it's a simple thing.
It is.
But it was hard to get my mind around it, that's the reason I was smiling.
I would say ultimately it became a simple thing, and I'd like to say, before I make any other comments, your staff, the secretary treasurer and his staff have been amazing, along with the other city departments, in helping us go through this, because it's not a situation that arises very often. So there were some intricacies here, but quite simply, yes, what we're doing is severing the elevator because it was tied to one commercial unit, and it causes issues with the other three commercial units in the building, and the same with the mechanical room. Ultimately, by granting the severance, it would allow them to share ownership of those two entities.
All right, simply put. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No, I think we can take this into committee.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If my colleagues don't have any concerns with this, I'd like to move approval of the application. There are a number of reporting agencies, they all except for planning, indicated that they don't have comments, and planning is asked that we attach the standard consent conditions, which my motion includes.
All right, thank you. And do we have a second or? Mr. Marziani? All in favor? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. You're welcome. All right. Item five. Two seven eight Glen Grove Avenue West. This is an application to alter the existing two-story dwelling by adding a one-story rear addition and a rear terrace. We have variances for rear deck setback, west side lot line, floor space index, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, rear exterior stair width. On file, we have a survey and plans. Over applicant.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and panel members, sorry, I lost my voice.
It seems to be a common theme today.
I think so. I'm sorry. So, yeah, so the, I'm here to present our client of two seventy-eight Glen Grove West, it's a small lot, and they're asking for a small addition in the back, the northwest corner, and it's similar application to what we did for the next door, and as I know there is no, there are no oppositions, please let me know if you want me to present.
Can you start with an address, please? Your address?
My address is three eight eight Spadino Road.
All right, so you're, I'm just confused, you are, oh, you are from Lauren Rose.
Yeah, I'm his partner.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, my voice is.
That's okay, we'll try not to make you talk too much.
I'm sorry, I'm Lauren Rose's partner.
Gotcha.
And, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do, does committee want a presentation on this? I'm getting head shakes, no. All right, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. All right, we will, oh, so go ahead, Mr. Marziani.
Just a clarification, the, the requested setbacks are the same. Clarification, the, the requested setbacks are, um, the same as existing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, I think that those are all the questions we have. Do you want to take it into committee? All right, Ms. Martin?
Sure, I can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject, subject to the, uh, community planning report that, um, would like to, uh, put a condition on to, uh, that the, uh, application be, um, subject to the variance six and nine be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing.
Ms. Martin, I think we've got the wrong application.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think there is a community planning report on this one.
You're right. Oh, dear.
But you can still make a motion.
That was the next one. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this application.
All right, without any conditions, I don't believe there are any.
You're right. Oh gee.
Okay, do we have a second, or? Ms. Sankar? Thank you. And all in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Oh, dear.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, item number six, five twenty-four Glen Park Avenue. This is an application to construct a new dwelling with a front porch and rear deck. We have variances for rear deck setback from the west side lot line, rear deck canopy to the west side lot line, front canopy setback to the west side lot line, area of a platform at the second story, number of stories, building length, west side yard setback, lock coverage, building depth, height of exterior main walls, parapet height above main wall height. On file, we have a survey, plans, presentation, uh, I don't know why I have cover, diagrams, photos, support signatures, urban forestry memo, and a community planning report. Do we have our applicant?
Uh, yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. It's, uh, Michael Persakini at one Sheffield Street, representing the owners.
All right, thank you. Um, do we want to, I don't think there's anyone here on this application. Anyone in the audience? Nope. Uh, do you want a presentation? Or do we have questions? Mr. Niffel?
I can keep it very quick.
Well, I think we have some questions for you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In the, um, chart that you gave supporting the, um, variances, um, number three platforms, balconies, you said, um, that the platform proposed at five twenty-four Glen Park Avenue is smaller than the precedent, and it incorporates approver- appropriate privacy screenings, uh, appropriate privacy measures, my mistake, sorry. Um, I didn't see any, um, privacy measures on your drawings. Uh, I may have missed them. Can you elaborate, please?
Um, yes, uh, regarding the, the platforms, um, the reason for the, and going over the zoning comments with our examiner, Olivia, uh, the reason for these platform, uh, comments from the get-go is primarily due to our, uh, fourth variance, uh, considering this home, uh, a three-story home as opposed to a two, so it's, it's primarily a deck that's on our quote-unquote ground floor, um, that, uh, it, it, it's essentially our main level where we have a deck that exits to the backyard, and it's considered our second floor here, um, uh, just due to that other variance that triggers this, uh, specific comment. So this particular platform is not very high, it's not, uh, like most second-floor platforms. Um, so, I mean, the, the, the variances are linked here, um, a- and essentially the homeowners is just hoping to just propose, uh, typical railing system around this deck here.
So in fact, there are privacy issues incorporated, which is what your chart indicated.
There are pri- privacy, I'm saying that the, the, this platform specifically is not very high off of the grade level, uh, like the, uh, uh, additional second-floor, uh, decks that, uh, other homes are typically have here.
How high is?
Um, can we just, uh, pull up, uh, our supporting documents with our elevation? Uh, about eight feet at the back of the home.
Eight feet in the air.
Eight feet in the air, that's correct.
There's also a, a stairway that leads to that, which is also a privacy issue. But my point is, in your submission, you indicated that you, it shouldn't be a concern because you've incorporated privacy measures, but in fact, you haven't.
It's, it's really just a, uh, overhead, uh, canopy over the space. It's not, um, a- additional, uh, fencing along each side, but the homeowners are happy to accommodate that. It's not currently in the design.
Thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
I also have, uh, questions regarding the height of the exterior main walls. That's a significant.
Yes.
Increase over what's permitted, and also the parapet is extremely.
Yeah.
Higher than what's required or.
Understand as well, yeah. So, 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 uh, variances, uh, nine and ten are, they are linked together as well. Um, it's not actually that the parapet is that high. Uh, the zoning examiner is calling the parapet that high because it exceeds the, uh, bylaw height for main walls, but, uh, as you can see from the elevation, the parapet is essentially a, a foot above our top floor level. Um, but in looking at, um, sorry, this is the rear elevation, can we just pull up the, uh, front elevation or the supporting documents that we, we submitted? Because in looking at this home, um, and, uh, and, and sorry, ju- just to start, uh, from this, from the beginning for this application, uh, the homeowners have really done their due diligence with this home and talking to neighbors here. Um, they've, uh, spoken to a lot of neighbors, they've gotten their letters of support here, um, in, in, and not just in order to obtain letters of support, but they originally went to them, uh, with, uh, hoping for any recommendations or suggestions for adjustments, uh, and they didn't find any. Uh, if we can, sorry, go to the next page here. You can look at this front elevation, it's not, uh, an egregiously large home or egregiously tall either. In fact, it aligns, uh, very much so with neighboring houses. In fact, house right across the street that was just approved earlier this year, uh, five oh five Glen Park. Uh, and, and, and really, a, a lot of these comments stem from, uh, basically not wanting the garage to take up majority of the space on this main ground floor level. So, as a result, that first floor level has to sit above the garage in order to avoid that. Um, so all the, all of the heights, uh, that align with these floors are not, uh, are not, are not extreme, they align with most homes that are built these days here. Um, a- and, and, uh, and in saying that, um, the, the variances are linked, it's not a, a large parapet, it is just that the main walls' heights are, are higher than the seven point five, but the home overall does not exceed, uh, height limitation.
Okay, but again, not to beat a dead horse here, but the parapet is measured from the top of the height of the wall, so is it not? And, and the maximum permitted is point three, but you're asking for two-point-one meters above the.
Yes, the main, the main floor walls are higher than the, uh, seven-point-five requirement. So, uh, t- technically speaking, w- we call a parapet above that, um, second floor level, but they're measuring the parapet from the, above the bylaw setback, so it's not really a, a large parapet per se, it is, uh, it is above the, the bylaw.
Okay, it doesn't look like a large parapet, but the.
It's not, it's only, it's actually only a foot.
Okay, I don't understand why the variance is for more, but, all right, I will, I will leave it at that.
Sorry, just to try to explain a little bit better, it, it is, the, the variance is, is labeled as that height because it's taken from the, the bylaw maximum sidewall height that is the, within the bylaws.
Oh, you mean the seven-point-five?
Seven-point-five, that's why.
That's what I'm not.
That's why she's written it as a.
All right, thank you.
Not really, uh, that high of a.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right, any further questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. Marziani?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, I was trying to, uh, find the building length and depth excluding the excavated, unexcavated area below deck. Can you confirm that number? I couldn't find it on your drawing. I know, uh, that the building le- length and depth variance is the reason of, uh, the, the, the area below the rear deck.
Yes, yes.
I can't see what's the real building length excluding that portion. Do you, can you clarify that?
Um, yes, I can. So this, this, uh, site plan that's uploaded here right now should be able to show you, um, the, the differences between what's being, uh, proposed and what the bylaw actually limits us to. Um, so the blue is what's proposed, uh, above, and the red is where our bylaw limits us. Um, I, I did want to mention here that we do have a planning staff report that recommends approval.
Trying to get to that, I understand that, yes.
Yeah, a- and, and the reason, and, and the reason is because if you can look at the blue, it aligns a lot with the rear porch, um, which, which is essentially the difference between what is allowed and what we're proposing, and a lot of that, uh, area is, is below our ground floor, our quote-unquote ground floor. It's, it's, it's not two stories that extends back at that height.
So, so, uh, the real building length is just over seventeen meters, correct?
The real, yeah, the real building length is nineteen, when you incorporate our, our front porch as well.
Oh.
So you, sorry, you can see it.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. And, and as a result, it also was the same, same type of comment for building depth here.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, you know, uh, th- this home, you know, primarily derived from the home that's, it, a lot of its inspiration is taken from the home that's across the street, um, that had all of these exact same variances and was approved earlier this year. Uh, in fact, the, uh, it's, it's not that the, the home just doesn't fit in the lot, this hot, this lot is particularly a little bit smaller than most lots in the, on the street, um, but, you know, the home does, uh, align with, with, uh, a lot of what we see on the street here. Its inspiration was pulled from everything in the neighborhood, actually.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, I think we've, um, asked enough questions that we don't need a presentation now. Um, let's take, take this into committee. Would anyone like to, um, make a comment or make a motion? Mr. Marziani?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I think I don't have any difficulty with this application. Uh, the building length and depth was my only concern, uh, that is just, uh, because the reason of, uh, because the result of the extension of the basement, so, uh, I would be happy to make a motion to approve this application, subject to, uh, urban planning condition that the variances number six and nine to be developed substantially with the latest site plan and submitted, as attached to the report. And I don't think I would include a privacy screen because I think it creates more mess, and since there is no objection from the immediate neighbors, I wouldn't include that in my motion.
Okay, and I think there's a forestry condition?
Thanks for reminding, so, um.
Number one?
I would include that.
And would you also accept that the, uh, covered porch remain, uh, unenclosed?
Unenclosed, that's, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second, or for the motion? Ms. Sankar? All in favor? That is unanimous, the application. Oh, I'm sorry, I went too fast. Not unanimous. Uh, all in favor? So we have four in favor, and opposed? Mr. Niffel? Thank you. Your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, does anybody need a break yet, or should we do?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind a break, please.
Sure, we'll take a quick break.
Thank you.
Ten minutes? We could say five. It'll probably be ten. All right. All right, I believe we are back now. Item seven. All right, Ms. Sankar is back with us. Um eighty-three Glengrove Avenue. Oh. We are getting feedback. We good? Thank you. Uh this is an application to construct a covered terrace at the rear of the property. Variances are for east side yard setback to the terrace, west side yard setback to the terrace. Height of platform above ground, east side yard setback to the roof of the platform, and west side yard setback to the platform. I think that's probably the roof. On file, we have previous decisions, survey, updated site plan, plans, site photos, a letter of support from eighty-five Glengrove. And I believe that is it. Uh do we have our applicant with us?
Uh yes, Joe Dome, one thirty-three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Thank you. Um committee, do we have questions? Do we want a presentation? No to what? No presentation? Oh, no presentation, no questions? Um but we do have, I just need to clarify. Yeah, that's a resident? Um we should just double check because we don't know whether there's somebody who is registered online. Um Brielle Schwartz. One twenty Castlefield. I don't know whether they are um have concerns with the application, so perhaps we should just check with them?
Yeah, this is. This is Glengrove.
You sure?
Brielle Schwartz.
Where, that's us.
Yeah?
Hello?
Hello, yes, hi. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, I just need to clarify. Do you have concerns with the application?
Yeah. Um we um, my name is Alex Strub and I live at one fifty Almore Avenue. And I'm here representing Brielle Schwartz. Um we have three variances. And the first two relate to a very small addition at the back, which is identical to the.
Sorry, just to clarify, are you the owner?
And um it brings up the house from twelve hundred square feet.
Hello?
Uh which is adding a few hundred square feet to.
Okay, sir, can you wait? Hold on, hold on.
And the third, the third variance is regarding the, the parking. Uh we reviewed the forestry letter of um that they, they submitted.
Know what?
And um we're happy to work with um.
Alex, excuse me, Alex?
And our request to ensure that we have the best possible surface material in terms of reducing any damage to any adjacent trees. If you choose to um support that third var- variance, which would be very helpful in getting two cars for a normal family.
Can you mute him?
Yeah.
No, I think we've got the wrong person.
Can uh, can you make it louder?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Okay, we're, we're looking for, we are on eighty-three Glengrove Avenue West. That is the application we're on?
Yeah, we got the wrong line.
I think so. So perhaps you could mute and wait and your application will come up. Thank you.
Yeah, it was Glengrove.
So we have Joe Dome, who is the agent on eighty-three Glengrove. We've heard from him. And what we're trying to clarify is Brielle Schwartz, who's registered on our list uh from one twenty Castlefield Avenue, is she? Uh how? I don't think that was the right application. Yeah, maybe, do you want to phone her? Is she not, is she online? Well, I don't want to start that over again. Um but they weren't on the right application. Or maybe that person is for another op- uh you know what? The, look at her address, it's one twenty Castlefield, so she's item eight. I think we can pretty much make that assumption. So, let's go back to Mr. Dome on eighty-three Glengrove. And um I don't believe we have anybody here on that application. So do committee members have any questions for Mr. Dome? Uh Ms. Martin?
I'm just, uh I just need some clarification on the existing garage on the property to, it looks like it's to the east of the subject property. Um i- it shows two different locations for the existing garage, or am I reading this incorrectly?
Yes. Uh i- yes, I, I would note that a revised site plan has been submitted, uh which does show the neighbor's newer dwelling at uh number eighty-five uh with their rear detached garage in the correct location. I believe the original site plan um uh was, was referencing an older survey before the, the new um uh builds there at number eighty-five had been constructed. That's why there's uh uh two different locations, but the revised site plan correctly shows uh the location.
Staff?
Okay, thank you.
So the existing garage is actually aligned with where you want to put the new
uh the new terrace, is that right?
That's the other one. That's the eighty-one.
That's the, the previous one, yes.
That's the previous one. Oh, well, your date.
Maybe.
The date on the.
The most relevant. Staff, can you just put up the updated site plan for this file? And make it bigger?
Which one's the up?
I don't know, when I click on updated site plan, I get a large.
Uh the, the uh, the top one would be the updated.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Can well, one is eighty, uh the garage of eighty-one is aligned. The garage of eighty-five is setback further than the terrace, if that was your question. All right. Any other questions? No, all right. Let's take this into committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If my colleagues don't have any um concerns with this application, I'd like to move approval of the application with only one condition. Um and that is that privacy be uh provided to the rear deck um as shown on drawing A three oh four, drawing A three eleven.
They can't hear you ve- very well, Mr. Niffel. I think you need to just bend your microphone back. Yeah.
I'd like to um bring forward a motion of approval, subject to privacy for the rear deck being provided in accordance with drawings A three oh four, A three one eleven, and A three one three. That's the main floor plan and the two elevations. The applicant has integrated the privacy as an extension of the actual building walls, and I think that's really commendable.
And are you okay with it remaining unenclosed, conditioned?
Oh, yeah, yes. Um it's, it's open on one side, so I, that's I, uh, another condition that the rear deck remain open.
Okay. You okay with that, staff? All right, do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, now we're going to move on to item eight, one twenty Castlefield Avenue. And this is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constru- constructing a two-story rear two-story addition. Well, I gotta move my notes up. We have variances for building length, floor space index, parking space width. On file, we have a survey, plans, supporting material, letter from owner, urban forestry memo, and letters of support from thirty Rosewell and one eighteen Castlefield Avenue. Now we'll bring our applicant.
Hello, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Um my name is, I'd like to say hello to Madam Chairman and the board members. My name is Alex Strub. Um I am the representative for Brielle Schwartz. I live at one fifty Almore Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's just a quick review of the variances. The first two relate to a very modest two-story addition, which is identical to the addition uh to the house east of our home. We are in a corner lot, so we only have one home adjacent, it's a semi, and the addition that they built is identical to the one we are proposing. The third variance relates to the parking. Uh we would like to, of course, provide two parking spots to a potential family. Most people have two uh, two cars these days, and we're happy to make it a condition uh that we um consult with an arborist to put the best possible flooring uh material beneath the cars to mediate any, any potential damage to adjacent trees if the um board uh decides to support that third variant.
All right, thank you. I don't think we have comments from forestry on that, do we? Do you show it on the site plan? The parking?
Yes. Yes, we do.
All right. Oh yeah, I see. Um hmm. I don't know if we need that condition, committee, but thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could you um advise whether or not you've had any ongoing discussions with urban forestry? I'm, I'm a bit confused by their report.
No, um actually, we have not had any discuss- discussions with forestry because we have not proposed taking down any trees at all.
Okay, in, in their report, which maybe we um yeah, it's on there. Um they don't object to the approval, but they think it's a consent, which um doesn't, doesn't make sense. Um and then they mentioned that there are potentially problems with two trees. Um but there's no condition recommended. I'm just, and you've had no discussions from them or with them about that issue?
No, no, we haven't had any discussions at all. Um the trees are basically on the lot line, more or less. And um uh one of them, and there's one is on a city tree off our lot line. And we um, we have had no discussions with them because we're not proposing to take down the trees. And we are also, you know, keeping in mind the health of the trees, and we don't, we will be putting in um the best possible surface material to make sure that we mediate any damage to any adjacent trees in the area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Martin?
Um would you agree to putting in um permeable pavers on the, the parking? Um actually, both parking spaces uh to allow for more, you know, to allow for water to get in for these trees?
Absolutely, we're happy to do that.
How are you going to protect, like you said, uh that you were, you were going to put up protection fence? I can't see how you're going to do that and not impact the tree.
Well, we can, um there are, there are different ways of putting in some protection around the trees. I mean, they can be cantilevered and they don't have to um be, you know, directly um in, in the perimeter of the tree. We can, we can create a um uh a solution that would be in keeping with um current uh standards that would help to mediate any damage to any tree would be, we're, we're, we're very concerned and we will do whatever we, we can in consultation with an arborist to make sure that we have the right protection.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to hand dig, hand dig out the um, the um the granular base for the parking garage and the pavers. It's going to be a.
Yes, we're, we're happy to do whatever it takes to make sure that we have the correct permeable uh paver installation.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's take this into committee. Mr. Marziani?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a straightforward application. Uh I am confident that the tree can be easily preserved, and I liked my colleague's suggestion to include permeable pavers for the uh two parking, two rear parking, so I put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition. With the con- actually, with inclusion of permeable pavers for the parking spots, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Miss.
Maybe one condition, all right.
Uh for the two parking spots at the back.
All right, uh seconder, Ms. Sankar waving her hand virtually. Thank you. Um all in favor of the application or the motion? All right, that is unanimous, carried. The application's been approved. All right, that is unanimous, carried. The application's been approved.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. All right, item nine, two forty-three St. Clement's Avenue. This is an application to construct a two-story detached dwelling with an integral two-car garage and a rear covered porch. We have variances for floor space index and side-by-side parking space width. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, supporting material, and a letter of support from one forty-two Castlefield Avenue. All right, do we have our applicant?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mayor Manias, One Teakwood Grove, Toronto, M three B, two H nine. I'm the agent.
Thank you. Committee, do we need a presentation? I don't think so. I don't think we need a presentation unless there's something you want to tell us.
No, it's pretty straightforward. The FSI is within reason of what's been approved in the neighborhood. I'm not sure about variance number two. I've never seen this one before, but that's what the zoning examiner came up with, and we're just abiding by the notice.
Yeah, that's, I don't know that I've seen it either, but interesting. All right, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, let's take it into committee. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't have any difficulty with this application. I wish there wasn't a double car garage on the front of the building, which I think dominates it, but that's not part of the variances. So, setting that aside, I think that the proposal is reasonable, and it fits into the general character of the neighborhood and the community. I'd like to move approval without any conditions.
All right, thank you. And do we have a second, or Ms. Sankar again? All right, all in, oh, Mr. Marziani, did you have a comment, or you were just, okay, thank you. Just checking. All right, all in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, item ten. Fifty-six Park Hill Road. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling. We have variances for south side yard setback, two rear deck, height of side, exterior main walls, building length, floor space index, front yard setback, south side yard setback, area of rear deck at the second story, bay window encroachment into rear yard, setback, where am I, setback of the bay window. Oh, I'm a bit confused here. South, setback to the north side lot line. I think that was of the bay window. On file, we have a survey, plans dated October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, revised plans November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, tree photos, a presentation, community planning report, and a letter of objection from fifty-four Park Hill Road. We have our applicant.
Good morning. My name is Tay Rook. I'm the planner for the owners of the property at fifty-six Park Hill Road, and I'm at eighty-five Rikard Crescent.
All right, thank you. We have a neighbor who is in person? Okay, correct, great. So, if you could provide us with a brief presentation, please?
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. Before we start, there's some deletions and modifications-
Oh, yes, I forgot to ask that. I'm sorry. Do you have any changes to make to the application today?
We do, and I'll go through them from top to bottom. So, variance number one, which relates to the south side yard setback for the rear deck, that's been deleted.
Okay.
Variance number two has been modified, which is for the main wall heights, to, from eleven point six seven down to eleven point five two, so eleven point five two is a new number. And then, variance number eight has been deleted, which is related to the rear bay window encroachment into the rear yard.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now, if you could give us a brief presentation?
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. If you could go through my presentation slides, and we'll just start off with slide number three. Basically, that's the site plan, and you'll note some areas that have been highlighted in green. So, I'll start with the front yard setback. We have a front yard setback proposed of seven point seven two meters, whereas seven point eight two is permitted. And that's related to the two green posts for the canopy for the porch at the front, which is on the right-hand side. You'll note that there is a measurement of seven point seven two versus the seven point eight two, and you'll note that there are other portions of the house is seven point eight two, seven point eight seven meters or greater. So, it's only related to those two posts for the canopy. As it relates to the bay window on the north side, which is the green rectangle up top, that is for the point four six setback, and that is a bay window that runs from the ground to the second floor. And it's a decorative measure, and from a streetscape perspective, it's only limited to that portion, and from a streetscape perspective, with the city right away in addition to setback, it's setback further enough where it's not going to be an encroachment into the streetscape whatsoever. The third variance related is related to the building length. If you go further to the left, you'll see there's a seventeen-meter mark. We're proposing seventeen point one five. It's a very small fifteen-centimeter sliver that's at the rear, that extends the rear length, wall of the building. And from a streetscape perspective, from a site plan perspective, and from a realistic perspective, it'd be insurmountable from, as you walk along the street. And from an impact perspective, it would be negligible as well. We have variances related to the main walls. And if you could go to the side elevations, which is slides number five and six. So, that is the north side. So, five, slide number five is the, okay, so we'll start with that one. That is the side wall that's adjacent to fifty-four at Park Hill, so which is the south elevation. It's related to the triangular piece up top. It's the gable for the roof line. Majority of the house itself, or those main wall, is below the seven, nine point five meter mark. It's only related to that shaded area, the gable, the triangular piece at the front of the house. And from an impact perspective, it would be consistent with the roof line to the adjacent neighbor to the south. So, there is no overlook or overhang or massing impression that would be felt upon fifty-four, as it would be basically facing onto their roof line. Similar variance on the previous slide, which is the north side elevation. Once again, it's related to the gables. If you go back up top, sorry, thank you. The triangular pieces that have been highlighted in green, the gables for the roof line. You'll note the nine-and-a-half-meter mark, and those two portions, which face the exterior side yard onto the street, are the portion of the roof line that is in excess of the nine-and-a-half meter. And from an impact perspective, I would say to the committee and submit to the committee that it would be appropriate, and it serves as an architectural feature for the dwelling. And you'll also note that there isn't a overall height variance that's being proposed for the dwelling. The overall height is twelve meters that is permitted. We're under that requirement. So, from an overall massing perspective, with the exception of these two side, with the exception of the gable elements along the side walls, we are in compliance with the overall height and massing of the proposal. There is a variance related to FSI at point nine five versus point six zero. And that's related to, because there is a grade difference, you'll note at the front, on this elevation, you know, at the front being the left, it's slightly slopes downwards towards the rear. And if you look at the rear elevation, which is elevation of slide number seven, there is a slope that goes downwards from the street to the north, down towards fifty-four. That causes some of the basement, which is being considered as part of the first floor in this particular case, to be calculated as part of FSI. You'll note, if you, sorry to do this, but if you go back to the front elevation of slide number four, you'll note that from a streetscape perspective, it presents itself as pretty much a two-story dwelling. You'll note that the first four elevations or the steps up to the front door are less than one point two meters. So, in no way does this appear to be a stacked house in any regard. And if you were to take out what's being considered the first floor, which is the basement, out of the calculation, you end up with an FSI of point six eight versus the point nine. So, once again, overall height is in compliance. Overall massing is pretty much in compliance with the exception of the two portions, with the exceptions of the gables for the main wall heights. And if you look at the other variances related to the area of the deck, that's also related to the fact because the basement is being considered the first floor, which causes, which requires a four-square-meter area requirement. However, if that basement was not considered the first floor, there wouldn't be a variance for the deck. So, that's being, it's, I hate using the word technical. I know committee doesn't like the word technical, but in this particular case, it's a technical variance. In no way is this dwelling an inappropriate form of development. And if you look at the pictures that have been provided from slides eight to ten, you'll find some, that's the subject house right there. Across the street, you have a modern forum house with a flatter roof line, which is similar in terms of the massing that's being proposed. And that house might be slightly larger than what we're proposing on this particular lot. If you go to the next slides.
And your time's up.
Similar types of houses, once again, elevated fresh floors, similar types of massing, similar types of streetscape that's being presented to the street as the proposed. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, do you have any concern with tying variance five and nine to the site plan and tying variance two, the main wall height one, to the south and north elevations?
No, we have no issues with that. And if there's one thing I may add, we are, if you'll note in the site plan that's being provided, which is slide number three, there's a one-point-eight-meter privacy fence we're willing to add to the adjacent neighbor to the south at the deck. That's in orange.
All right. Okay, does anyone have any questions of the applicant at this point, other than, no? Let's go to our neighbor, please. Just make sure the microphone's on, and you start with your name and address, please.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns. My name is Shelley Bierermann, and I'm the registered owner of fifty-four Park Hill Road, and I've lived there for fifty-four, thirty, fifty-four, be older than I am, thirty-four years. My house is directly south of fifty-six Park Hill Road and is a two-story detached dwelling. I'm the neighbor most affected by the proposed property. I'm a health law lawyer who works exclusively from my home office. As mentioned in my written comments, I did discuss matters with both the owner and the architects, but nothing was reported back to me as to how they were dealing with it. In brief, I'm highly concerned about the narrowing of my access to my side door and backyard and about the privacy implications of the proposed variances. Now, if what I heard today about a proposed, is it, may I ask if it means that variance one is dropped? Is it okay to ask that question?
Yes, and the applicant indicated that it is.
Okay. I couldn't see that online. That's great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I will still speak to variance, I'm going to speak to now three variances. Variant six deals with the setback for the rear decks and still has implications for my privacy. I use my backyard extensively, especially during the summer, for work, gardening, family visits, and when I take care of my grandchildren. I am concerned that what is proposed is a proposed variance for the setback of point six one meters when the bylaw permits point nine. It's a third, a third greater or a third lesser of protection for the setback. So, I would ask that the deletion of number one also be a deletion for number six as well. Okay, now, I'll speak to variance number seven, which is the size of the decks. There's two decks proposed. There's a lower and an upper one. The proposed variance is thirty-three point two seven square meters. What's permitted is four square meters. The owner plans to build this upper and lower deck, and it appears to go, I'm not an architect, the entire length of the house and beyond. He seeks to increase the permitted area eight times. The two proposed decks will each directly look into my backyard and my office, which is at the back of my house. As previously mentioned, I work, garden, entertain, and play with my grandchildren in the backyard. The two decks will interfere with my privacy. So, what I'm going to ask is, what am I asking for? I see that there is a privacy screen proposed since November twenty-seventh that goes one-point-eight meters on one side of the lower deck. That's great, thank you. What I'd like to ask for is that there be privacy screens for the entire decks, for the entire, both of the decks and for the width and the length of the two decks. I would also ask that foliage be planted between the two houses to provide additional privacy. And I don't think the size of deck, the increase, is a minor variance, and that the decks be considered for a significantly less variance than the thirty-three point two square meters. The last variance I'll speak to is the height of the property. I recognize that you're referring to the gables, but that goes to the total gestalt of the property that you're building. The proposed variance is eleven point six seven meters, whereas what is permitted for height is nine point five. This means that there is approximately a six-foot higher footprint of that house on the gables in the front, and one gable that will be facing directly to me. In my view, this does change the footprint of the west side of Park Hill Road. Park Hill Road has two parts to it. It's, for want of a better word, North Park Hill and South Park Hill Road. It's bifurcated by Whitmore Avenue, and you actually have to jog to get onto the side of the street, which is ours, fifty-four and fifty-six North Park Hill Road. There's only one house of the pictures provided on Park Hill that relates to North Park Hill Road, and it itself dwarfs the bungalows. It's beside two bungalows. Mine is two-story, so, you know, I don't feel it's the same kind of feeling as they do have on that side. But there is that only one house, and it really stands out on the North Park Hill Road piece. There was a staff report that suggested a decrease in height, but it's only very minor to eleven point fifty-two. So, what am I asking? I request that the variance in height be limited to help maintain a height that is consistent with the physical character of North Park Hill Road as contemplated by the bylaw. I appreciate that some modifications have been made, but I don't think they're totally adequate. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much. Any questions of clarification? Sorry, we have a question, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm a little confused by your request around the deck at the back. You're concerned with the privacy for your rear yard. So, if we look at the revised plan-
Yes.
Site plan, the- I'm pulling it up. Yeah, can we go to the revised site plan? Yeah, there, there we go. Did I understand that you're suggesting the privacy screen that's now proposed on this drawing also go on the other side?
Yes.
Across the back?
Yes.
Why?
And the upper, because if people are standing, I am not, I am not an architect, so I have, if I have this wrong, my concern is that anybody standing, so you've got an upper deck and you've got a lower deck. So, that privacy screen will go about five feet. But how does that protect me from people on the upper deck looking directly into the backyard?
Oh, okay.
That's my concern.
Okay, that's clear. What I thought you wanted was some kind of a screen all the way around the two decks, and that didn't make any sense.
And any part of the deck that would have access to viewing into my backyard, that's what I would like.
There's a problem there. It would seem, if you look at, you look at this drawing, it's on the screen.
Yes, yes.
The upper deck, what connects the upper deck and the lower deck is a staircase, and you can't, you can't put a fence across there. And the amount of space that's left on the upper deck for screening is really very small. So, I would question whether that's really going to be-
Can they make a higher deck? Can they make a higher privacy screen then from the one that's proposed of the one-point-eight meters?
I'm not sure that would, that would work either. I just, I wanted to clarify what you, now I understand what you're talking about.
I would like to prevent, thank you for the question. I would like to prevent direct access to looking directly into my backyard. If somebody has a creative, if they have a creative way, that's my goal. That's my objective. So that if, I mean, they're huge decks, so, right now, way beyond what the bylaw permits. So, I don't know what's planned to do there. I don't know how many people are there. I don't know if parties are there. I myself like the outdoors, so I appreciate that people like the outdoors, but that's a lot of viewing, and I have, you know, I do, I do work out there. I do- I do, I do work out there, I do work on my backyard, I've made the internet accessible there, I just don't want that kind of viewing into my. But thank you for asking me and I may not have the best plans, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, any other questions of the resident, no, alright, thank you very much. Uh, let's bring the applicant back to address the concerns.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, uh, I'll go through them as they were discussed by Ms. Bierbaum. Uh, with regards to the side yard setback that's being proposed at point six, uh, one. Uh, if you go to the presentation slides, slide number two. You'll find that this neighborhood, all those properties that have been highlighted in purple slash pink. Are properties that have reduced side yard setbacks, including, uh, the neighbor, Ms. Bierbaum's property, uh, uh, adjacent to ours. On either one side or both sides of the properties. And this proposal seeks to basically be consistent with the develop pattern of. Pattern of development that's already occurred in this neighborhood. In no way does it seek to create a new, uh, development pattern. With regards to the side yard setback itself, uh, from an access point of view. Um, there is plenty of space to still access to the, the side yards on either properties. Uh, with the point six one meter side yard setbacks. In addition to that, you'll find that this neighborhood is a very tightly knit neighborhood, um, it, it is in the city of Toronto. Um, it is something that is consistent or found throughout within this neighborhood. And from a deck perspective and overviews, some overviews are anticipated, uh, within these types of neighborhoods. And with the, with the inclusion of the privacy fence that's being proposed along the south side at one point eight meters. We believe that the mitigation that's being provided with this privacy fence would be, uh, sufficient enough in terms of privacy. To protect the privacy of Ms. Bierbaum on fifty-four. And the size of the deck, once again. Is a technical variance because the basement is being considered the first floor. Uh, because of the grades that's being presented or that exists on this property. Uh, with the sloping from fairly crescent down towards Ms. Bierbaum's property and from the south, uh, dropping slopes from the front of park lawn. Towards the rear yard of this property. And as a result of that, that is why we have this variance, if the slope was flat. Once again, this variance would not exist and the same deck would be there, however, we are making provisions with the privacy fence. And once again, some views into adjacent properties are ex- ex- anticipated and are accepted, uh, from a planning perspective. With regards to the main wall heights, once again, the overall height of the proposal is under the twelve meter that is permitted in this area. And the main wall height variances, only the main wall height variances, no total height variances are related to the gables. Along the south and north sides, we're limited to the triangular portions that have been highlighted in my presentation slides. There is no, um, uh, no variances related to the number of stories as there is. No requirement for, or maximums related to number of stories, but once again. You look at it from a front yard perspective, front, uh, elevation perspective, this presents itself as a two-story dwelling. It doesn't have an elevated front entrance, that would suggest to you this is a massive stacked house. Uh, on top of the, uh, ground floor, uh, it's li- it's under the one point two meter mark. And once again, there is about one, two, three, four, five steps leading up to the front door. And I would submit to you that this, from a streetscape perspective, from a massing perspective, is an appropriate form of development, given the context of the site. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for the applicant, Ms. Martin?
Um, regarding the back decks, would you, um, be amenable to reducing the width of the. Steps going up to the high deck. Um, to allow a privacy scre- screen between the low deck and the high deck. Um, to be, it be increased to, um, to create more privacy for the, uh, the adjacent homeowner.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, my client's preference is to have provide a wider step, uh, staircase along that edge. Um, it does provide for easier access, in addition to that, as suggested by, uh, one of the committee members. Even regardless of how you, uh, strike, uh, reduce the width of the stairs. There's, that privacy screen will not be, uh, effective in my opinion, in terms of views towards adjacent property. Regardless if you swore to step closer towards the edge, front, rear edge of the, uh, deck. You're gonna see views into adjacent properties, not only to Ms. Bierbaum's property, the adjacent property, the rear property to the su- uh, to the west. Towards the north, um, views towards adjacent properties are not protected, it's something that's expected. It's whether or not if the impact associated with this deck or the, uh, is, is, would be considered egregious or, um, too harmful. Uh, to be considered acceptable, and I would submit to the committee that in this particular case, given the technical nature of the variance related to the rear deck. Uh, this is something that is anticipated acceptable, uh, given the context of this neighborhood.
Alright, um, that's it for questions? Okay, shall we take this into committee? Let's take it into committee, alright, questions, comments, um. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment, um, on the rear deck, um, variance number, I believe it's number seven. That's a fairly substantial variance, um, I don't buy that, um. Privacy is, and it's anticipated that privacy would be, um, impacted negatively by decks and that. You have to basically accept that, which is sort of what I heard the applicant say. Um, this is a very big deck, um, and the bylaw, if you look at the bylaw as the point of departure. Talks about four square meters and this is up to thirty-three point two seven square meters. Um, there's evidence here from the adjacent owner that that size deck is creating a privacy concern for her and I can understand that. The fact that it's on two levels, um, makes screening of the deck difficult. I would be concerned with the neighbor's proposal of two screens, uh, one for the upper and one for the lower deck. Um, I understand why she's proposing that, but it seems to me that that's a lot of extraneous construction. Um, on the, in the rear, rear yard of the, of the property that over time would, I think, just look messy. I, I think the larger issue here is the variance itself, I don't think that it's reasonable. To have a deck that large in this particular context, and so, um, from my perspective, I'm not prepared to support variance number seven. And I just wanted to give, um, some background of why I hold that view.
Okay, I will put my two cents in, I mean, the reason this variance is there is because of the slope of the property, as you heard the applicant indicate. The four square meters really relates to balconies on the second story of a property and that's why the limit's there. I think the fact that this balcony, uh, rear deck is split into two. Um, lessens the impact of that because it's not just one big platform that's thirty-three point two seven meters. And I think that the privacy screen that's been proposed by the applicant will help with, um. The privacy concerns of the neighbor. I had concerns with the main wall height, but hearing from the applicant, I now understand why, um. They're proposing that and I actually think the built form of this dwelling is probably more, um, pleasing than a flat roof. Where you could have a extreme mean wall height, which would have more impact in my opinion. Anyway, so that was my bigger concern, um, but I'll let others speak as well. If they want to. Or does anyone want to make a motion, Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Madam Chair, I mean, I'm, I'm, I actually understand the points that you're making, where you're coming from, but I also. Uh, empathize with the comments of, um, my colleague member Niffeld around this. Um, I get the explanation, but I'm having a really hard time picturing this and understanding. How this is going to sort of appear, and if I were the back neighbor as well. I would be really, really upset and I don't feel that it is minor, despite the changes that they've made to accommodate, uh. You know, the staff report and all of that, I, I'm very concerned still about item number seven, variant seven.
Alright, thank you for your comments, um, would someone like to make a motion? Or comment? Oh, Ms. Sankar, sorry, I looked away for a moment.
I, I could try to make a motion, I'm not sure that'll go through, but just based on, uh, my evaluation of the. Um, the property itself, I, I mean, I will, I will motion to approve the application, but it will be with the changes that. The amendments that were made by the applicant, uh, on the floor here today. And it will also be with, um, you know, the refusal of variance number seven. And that's my motion.
Alright, thank you, do we have a second for that motion? Mr. Niffel, all in favor of the motion? That is two in favor of the motion, three in favor of the motion, alright. Mr. Marziari and Ms. Cassin, uh, the motion carries and the, uh, application. As amended, has been approved with the exception of item seven. Seven was refused, sorry, not sure if I said correctly, okay, yes, alright, thank you. Alright, item eleven. Fourteen Everingham Court. This is an application to construct a new two-story dwelling with an integral garage and front porch. There are variances for west side yard setback, east side yard setback, building length, front exterior stair width. Location of air conditioning equipment, on file we have a survey, site plan, plans and site photos. And I take it our applicant is in front of us?
Yes, uh.
And your name and address again?
Come back again, uh, so all the viruses very clear here, you just read that, do you need me to go through again?
Sorry, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my address, uh, seventy Northern Crescent.
And your name?
Uh, Shawei, S-H-A-O-W-E-I-C-H-E-N-G.
Thank you. Um, okay, we don't have anybody here on this item, from what I can tell. Do we want a presentation, does anyone have any questions, no presentation? No questions at this point, alright, I think we will, unless there's something you wanna point out, we'll take it into committee?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, does anyone wanna jump in?
I can, uh.
Mr. Marziari?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I think it's a straightforward application, it clearly, uh, means the four tests, so I put forward a motion to approve with no condition.
Alright, thank you, uh, Mr. Niffel, second, thank you very much, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
That is unanimous, it's been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, item twelve, one eighteen Palm Drive. Oh, I'm gonna have trouble with this one, one sec. This is an application for a new two-story dwelling with a front porch and a rear second-story balcony. There are variances for east side yard setback.
Uh, can you hear me?
To rear deck, height of all side exterior main walls, building length, building depth. Front yard setback, lock coverage, area of rear second-story balcony. Front exterior stair width, east side yard setback and west side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised plan dated November twenty-seventh. Correspondence with planning staff and a late staff report. Uh, we have our applicant here. Excuse me. Mr. Mikulov?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, there we go, uh, my name is Isaac Mikulov of three sixty-three Hillmount Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of Leanne and Evan, the owners of one eighteen Palm Drive. Uh, we've submitted an application for several minor variances, uh, which I believe, uh, are currently before you. As well as you probably know, following discussions with planning, we have amended one variance and withdrawn another.
Alright, so sir, could we just start with that, let's start with the public meeting notice and indicate any changes that you are making to it.
Sure, um, on the side yard setback adjustment, the side yard setback for the rear deck was modified, increasing from. One point three five meters to one point five meters.
Sorry, which variance is that?
I believe that was number one.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so you're amending it from one point three five to?
One point five.
Thank you.
And then we have, uh, number five.
Uh-huh.
Which was the, uh, re- uh, required front yard setback. Uh, we've amended that, uh, from nine point one nine to nine point two six.
Okay.
After discussions with planning.
Oh, so, so you're taking that, you don't need that variance?
Could, yeah, we'll ta- we're removing that.
Okay, thank you.
It, it no longer becomes a required variance.
Right, okay, any other changes?
No, those are the only changes, uh, as discussed with planning. Uh, and I just wanted to say that included with our application are five letters of approval from neighboring residents in the immediate vicinity. Uh, demonstrating their support for our proposal.
Alright.
And further to that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, uh, to try and, um, help.
Alright, does anyone have any questions? No, doesn't look like it, uh, Mr. Marziari?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, so in regard with building depth and building length, if we approve the application, are you okay to tie it to site plan?
I'm sorry, like, the, the fact that we're bringing the. The fact that we're reducing the, uh, the si- the front yard setback will, will equalize both the building depth and, and. And the length of the building.
So those are being changed then?
Correct, the building depth, the building depth will be, uh, will be changed as well, yeah, because the building is moving forward.
So do you wanna clarify what your building length and depth are?
They are both going to be. Uh, I thought you were going to receive a note from planning, but they're both going to be, um, the nine point two six.
Sorry, the.
They're both going to be twenty-two point six six.
Oh, they're, so they, so right now, variance three, which is building length, is twenty-two point six six is the requested variance. So that stays the same.
Correct.
And, but the.
And the building depth.
Is going to increase to twenty-two point six six?
Correct.
Yeah, we can't entertain changes to variances that are more than what was originally required. Sorry? Yeah, you can't make it worse, so.
I think we cannot tie it to site plan, cause he's moving the house, um.
Unless it's in those revised plans.
To the front, so I think, yeah, okay.
We would have to leave the variance at twenty-two point five nine for depth.
Correct.
So, sorry, which one is that?
Number four, unless you wanna defer.
No, that's fine, so just leave it at the twenty-two point five nine.
Okay. Alright, um. We'll take this into committee? Okay, stand by?
I have a question for my colleagues.
Yeah.
So is, because I didn't ask the, um, applicant, so is the, the length of the, that building. Is it due to the front porch, is that why it's so long?
Should we pull the site plan out? Oh, the rear, oh, sorry. There's the front, I'm actually, oh. Uh, and the rear, the one-story rear, wait, am I on the right?
Is just for a portion of the building, but if we approve it, the problem is then they can build it, the whole building with it. problem is then they can build it, the whole building with that length, so.
But we don't have a revised.
We don't have any site plan to tie it to.
Right.
So I don't know how.
There is, there's revised plans from November 27th, but they don't reflect that? They, they include the front yard setback adjustment.
Oh, can we confirm with the applicant?
Sure, we'll go out of committee and we'll just go back to the applicant just to confirm. Did you hear the question? The November 27th revised plans reflect the change in the front yard setback?
Correct.
Okay, so if we tied the building.
Depth.
Depth.
And length.
And length?
Both to the site plan, are you?
Because you've changed on right avenue? Or no, am I confusing myself?
I don't understand this.
I've, I've changed, they've asked me to change the front yard setback to 9.26.
Yep, and that's reflected on.
Building length stays the same.
Okay.
Okay, it just moves forward by like, I don't know, two inches or so, three inches?
Okay. So, so if we tie the November 27th plan, if we tie the building length and depth to, and I expose the front yard setback if we want to do, if we tied that to that revised plan, we should be okay?
Yeah, that was the intent.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right.
Just, sorry, Madam Chair, if you make, just if you make that, please note that it's the plan received by, it's not stamped, the plan itself is not November 27th.
Okay, but does it have a? Receive, okay, so we, the plans received November 27th by C of A, is that okay? Mr.? And it hasn't even happened. Well, we could put both dates in. We could put the drawings dated December 8th, but I would say received by committee of adjustment November 27th, just to clarify. Okay.
I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure why you don't have the updated drawing, but I'm, I'm fine with that.
We do, we have the updated drawing. It's just your, your drawing date in your title block says December 8th.
Are we looking at the site plan?
Sorry, that's the title page?
Yeah, so.
And the site plan.
All the pages shows December 8th.
In your, in your title block?
Okay, yes, I see, okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Somebody got ahead of themselves. I doubt it. Do you see that?
I see the date, yes.
So, yeah, I think they're dated December 8th, but today is December 4th. It's a bit confusing.
If you take a look at the, if you take a look at the revisions.
What does that say? It's too small for me to read. One sec.
Okay, so I, I don't know what's going on with that drawing, but.
Yeah, there's no date on the revision on the site plan.
Yeah.
I feel better saying that it's the plans received by, I'm pretty sure we've done that before, received by the committee on November 27th.
I would be just fine with that. I also have a letter of approval from the planning department. Do you have that on, of November 27th?
We have correspondence from planning.
That they've approved my, my revisions in regards to their request, right?
Yeah, they don't, they don't approve, but they've indicated their support for the revisions, I believe.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we have that. All right, I think we're good. We're going, oh, Ms. Martin?
So this is a new, new dwelling that you're building, right?
Correct.
Why does it say one-story rear extension at the back? Like, what is that?
That's a permitted first-story extension to a construction which allows you to, to basically put a, a first-story extension with, with certain requirements.
But if it's a new building, it's, it's part of the build, so why is it called an extension?
Where, where are you seeing that?
On the revised plan.
Oh.
Well, because it's just a permitted extension to the first, to, to the first story.
I think the wording is confusing, but when you have a partial extension at the back, you can get more dips to certain width of the back. So you can go up to, I think, increase the length or depth, I don't remember, by two meters, that's why. I think the wording is confusing, but it's in.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're exhausted the questions with the applicant. Let's take it into committee. Mr. Marziari?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think with the revisions, I'm comfortable to support this application, so I'd like to make a motion if my colleagues don't have anything for the comment.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Sankar. In all the discussion, I didn't see you. Did you have a comment to make?
No, I think you're, you guys are receiving my reactions late, but it's okay. I was just going to make a motion, but Ms.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Marziari made, made it ahead of me, so that's fine.
You can go ahead, Ms. Sankar, I don't have.
I think she's deferring to.
Okay, so, so I put forward a motion to approve this application as amended variance number one to be increased to 1.5 meters. Variance number five to be 9.19 and also I would.
Removed.
Remove, sorry. Variance, variance number five removed, so compliant with the front yard setback. And then I would tie it to the site plan received on November 27th, 2025.
Sorry, can I just seek clarity? What part of that plan, because you mentioned it previously, are you tying it to?
Oh, the variances.
So, okay, so which part we're tying it to?
We're tying the.
The building length.
Building length and depth, variance three and four.
Correct, variance three in regard with building length and variance four in regard with building depths, I would tie it to revised plan received on November 27th, 2025.
Would you accept a friendly amendment? That the second floor balcony be developed in accordance, substantially in accordance with the second floor plan? It's on the roof of that extended kitchen element and it's only a portion of the roof. So I think we need to clarify that it's not the whole roof.
That's a good point. I accept that, thanks.
Oh, Mr. Niffel, you have to repeat it because they couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. That the second floor balcony be substantially constructed in accordance with the second floor plan drawing A6.
So you're talking about variance seven?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second there? Ms. Sankar? Thank you. All in favor of the application of the motion? That is unanimous. The application as amended has been approved. Thank you. And I believe that concludes the morning agenda. We will be back at 2:00 P.M.